All right, can I have your attention, please? The Winds Only Board of Appeals for February 15, 2022 is now in honor. And before we have a roll call, I'd like to welcome the new members to the board. And when our secretary, Mary Gookas, calls your name, I'd like you to raise your hand to acknowledge who you are. Can I understand?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mary, can you read the roll call?
Yes. Mr. Lopez Hernandez.
Here.
Can you raise his hand?
Mr. Makua?
I'm here, Florida.
Mr. Wooten?
President.
Mrs. Crowitz?
President.
Mr. Kalman?
President.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Ms. Maggio?
President.
Mr. Duffy?
Present.
And Mr. Olson?
Present.
We have a call. All right, which case we take?
Sam's on here. So you want to continue these cases, but you want John to go first?
Go first.
He runs the call first.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so you want to talk to him first, let him talk first. And you want to continue this?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. Mary's here.
Right there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm John McElfarlane, I'm Executive Director for the Office of the Mayor. I just want to first thank all of our new members for joining this board. This is a very important board, it's a significant board for the City of Lynn. You guys do important work here. I just want to let everyone here know that all of the new members of this board are professionals in this sphere that you guys work in. These are architects, engineers, construction professionals, design professionals, and they have a lot of knowledge to offer. So although there are only five regular members who vote, the four associate members have deep expertise that I hope you will all rely on as you guys deliberate on proceedings. And of course, we also have a attorney on the line, because we have a lot of legal expertise for everyone else who doesn't know this, attorney on the line, he can answer those questions for each of us, and please rely on him for that information. And I wish you guys the best. I think this is going to be a very productive board, this is a very professional group of people here, and I think you guys are going to do excellent together, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, first case.
Do you want to continue these?
Yeah.
But you want to let her write for this one?
Yeah, either way, I think she can continue this case.
Wall Street? Is it Wall Street?
No, Wall Street's not first, because he's not here.
Okay, the first case tonight is a new case, and there's a matter here to continue.
Do you want some of these cases first?
Mr. Wooten, can you read that?
Yes, please, I can. This is a new case. It's case number 9989, 113 Grove Street, parcel number 055210072. Petitioner Rafael Rosa Farforza. Attorney is David L. Esfranzing, ZBA number 9989. To vary the provisions of the City of Lynn Zone ordinance to allow the conversion of a previously non-conforming single-family home into a two-family home in the R2 District. Said property contains 4,246 square feet, more or less where 12,000 square feet is required, and contains 52.58 feet of frontage where the Zone ordinance requires 75 feet of frontage.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. All right, so...
Do you want to bring them in?
Do they want to be continued?
We have to make a motion to continue.
Yeah, I make a motion to continue.
A motion made to continue. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, come on in. Continue.
To continue the case on 113 Grove Street, case number 9989? Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to continue.
Member Makua?
Yes, continue.
Member Wooten?
Yes, to continue.
Member Crowitz?
Yes, to continue.
Member Kalman?
Yes, to continue. Now, we have to have a letter from the people who want to do this, but, you know, that letter keeps us off of the list.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mary, is it for my...
That's a stipulation. That's a stipulation. If they sign, you know, that letter.
The stipul... the letter to continue the case. The letter is sent by email.
Is the petitioner, are they here?
No, they're not.
They're not, okay.
The next one is case number 9991. You can read that, Tapley Street?
Sure.
Read that, please.
18 Tapley Street, parcel number 055225048. Petitioner Juan C. Gonzalez Martinez and Lilian Eldean Deon, ZBA 9991. To vary the provisions of the City of Lynn Zone ordinance to allow for the storage of no-removable equipment and landscape tools, along with two commercial vehicles to be upon the property, the variance seeks to permit a contracted yard in an R2 District.
Thank you.
I knew that we could see this case. Before you do that, a letter from Diana Jacutus.
Oh, yeah, where was...
Right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, can you read that?
A letter from Diana Jacutus for Ward 5. Dear Vice-Termin Colin, as you are aware, I'm the duty elected Ward 5 pastor for the City of Lynn, and I represent the Tapley Street neighborhood. This evening, there was a petition to operate a contracted yard at 18 Tapley Street in my ward. Please be advised that I have spoken with the neighbors of the property, and they are strongly opposed to this proposed use. Tapley Street neighborhood is a residential neighborhood, and a contracted yard is not an appropriate use in this area. The proposed use would cause property values decrease and would be a burden to the neighbors who reside in the area. The petitioners cannot support any evidence that the shape, size, topography, or soil conditions to the property would legally warrant the assurance of a variance. As the Ward Council, I'm strongly recommending that the zoning board of appeal deny this petition, but it is not in the best interest of the neighborhood. Thank you for your attention for this matter.
Okay, what is the wish of the board in this case?
I believe there's another letter from the neighbors, right?
Right now, there's a petition, but the only thing that was being read tonight was from Counselor Jacutus, because the case is being continued.
Continue.
Yeah.
Member Makua?
Yes, continue.
And...
Yes, continue.
No, seconded?
Seconded, to continue.
Okay, thank you. Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to continue.
Member Makua?
Yes, to continue.
Member Wooten?
Yes, to continue.
Member Crowitz?
Yes, to continue.
And Member Kalman?
Yes, to continue. Okay, Mr. Wooten, the case on Shirley Road, can you read that?
Case number 9990, 27 Shirley Road, parcel number 059034013. Petitioner Rafael Nunes with Jose Rob, ZBA 9990. To vary the provisions of the City of Lynn ordinance to allow the existence of a carport, an accessory structure which is not permitted in a side yard. Furthermore, the Zone ordinance prohibits any accessory structure to be located within three feet of a property line or six feet from any other structures located on the property.
There's an issue about the minutes.
Yes.
February 1st.
Yeah, February 1st. Yeah, to accept the minutes. February 1st. If you have no opposition, a motion is in honor to accept this writ.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion made by...
Accept.
Great.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, yes, votes will be clear. Shirley Road, right?
Yes.
Okay, the Shirley Road case is now open for those in favor. Is the petition, is he up for Shirley Road? Yeah, could you come up and give your name and address?
Just come up and just give your name and address, please.
Just give your name, address, and your occupation.
My name is Paolo, last name Jonas Vargas, at 27 Shirley Road. My occupation is a special officer for the Children's Hospital of Boston.
Okay, now, can you give us your presentation?
Well, when I first put up the carport, I bought it at Home Depot, I paid $1,900 for it. I did not know that it was going to be something that was going to be, you know, stretch it, because it's not bolted to the ground, it's not something that's permanent. It's windproof, where I know the wind's not going to blow it up away. I did check out my area, where I had enough room. The only real I got there, I used the car. My sister and my brother-in-law usually like to play dominoes and, you know, just sit there and have fun, or put the trash cans in, because I was having a problem with crutches creeping up through the back door. I mean, I just, we use it for the car, to park the car under it, for the snow, to stop the snow coming up, and try not to hurt nobody, or anything like that. I also have my next-door neighbor right here, which is on the other side of me also. And I don't know, she might have a problem, which I don't think she had a problem, maybe she wrote me a letter saying that it wasn't going to be a problem for that to be there.
Yes.
Which side is she on?
She's on...
The side of the carport?
Yes, the side of the carport.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here in favor of this petition?
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's a letter, is it?
Yes.
It was in the files, it's just a file letter from Inspection Service Department, that's why you see it today.
That's why you got notified.
That's why you got notified.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Yes, then.
As he alluded to, we share...
Your name, address, and occupation?
Well, I'm a homeowner, 29 Shirley Road, I work for the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. The property line we share, apparently there was a complaint, I never made a complaint, and I don't have a problem with the structure.
So you are in favor? Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for the petitioner. How long has it been out there for?
It's been out there for almost a year, right?
That is considered obstruction, that is permanent, you know, so there's an issue with that. The duration is too long. You're saying it's not bolted in, you can leave it out there for 20 years if you wanted, so that becomes obstruction, pretty much.
Right.
You know, that's the problem. You know, you can take it down every three weeks and put it back, that's a whole separate... ISD will have to deal with that, but the fact it's been there for a year, that is obstruction. Okay?
Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Here and now, for those in favor, for those opposed. Anyone here opposed to this petition?
You guys can certainly ask questions if you guys...
Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Here and now, for those opposed, what is the wish of the board?
I wish for the petition to remove destruction.
You want to remove this structure?
Could we compromise and just give him a stipulation if he sells the property?
Well, it's considered obstruction, permanent obstruction now, which is illegal, but we can force that out after ISD define it.
We don't know, we'd have to ask a lot of...
So maybe, Mr. Lamont, maybe you can try me here, see what's the best way of dealing with this? Because I believe on the building code, that is considered obstruction.
It is, it would be violation of the building code.
Correct.
The ten... the ten structure.
Right. So it's similar to what we do with the Wyoming Square, with true value, with the foundation, similar scenario.
All right, so you have to have the stipulation?
Well, there's no stipulation, I think, is to deny.
Oh, to deny.
Oh, that's too much.
Right.
Second?
So the motion made to deny and seconded.
I was waiting for the second.
If I could, there is a way to make this, turn this into a permissible variance. Right now, it's a tet-like structure, it's a violation of the building code, so that they may even come back with new plans. I encourage you to work with Inspection Services, you're also a plan, you're still not attached to the main hall, which needs a variance, and you also are too close to the...
To the neighbors.
There is a way to take out of the... There is a way to allow for a garage-type structure, working with the building code.
And I'll be okay with that, because you have to be three feet away from her, and you have, you know, get the guideline, the guidance from the ISD, and we'll be willing to listen to you again, I'll make a different motion, but...
I'm okay with that, I mean, if I'm allowed to do it, it's cold right now, it's snowy, and it's going to be hard to move it.
Well, currently you're in code violation, actually, that's why you're here.
You know what you should do, is make a... is withdraw your home, you know, your request, and we can... And then you'd be, you'd be able to do what you want to do later on.
Yeah, better to be...
It's better than hiding it.
Exactly, so you can withdraw the petition today, work with ISD, and follow number one within the one, maybe the seven weeks.
They want to withdraw your petition, isn't it?
Yeah, so with your own position, is that going to give everyone to come down, give me tickets, because I mean, it's winter, I can't... It's a mental structure, I can't just bring it up and move it, so I'm trying to figure out. I want to participate in what I have to do to make it right.
For us to proceed with the legal end of it, though, we have to accept a motion to withdraw from you, and I'm asking for a separate...
I'll second it. I'll second it, if that's what he's willing to do, yeah.
There's someone else, I'm making motion.
I think we can't prevent fines. We can ask if you withdraw your petition, because if we vote on it and you don't pass, it won't, you have, you can't come back again in three years. So if you withdraw your petition, and then figure out with ISD, and then come back again and re-submit, I think that's the way to go.
You have your time to do what you need to do.
To do what I have to do.
Right.
If I can add, if you're working with ISD, they will typically hold off on the budget. It's when you get a letter in the mail, and those are ignored, or they feel like there's no communication. If you work with ISD, if they call that right, it's a fine, but not as long as they feel as a good pay basis.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, you take it. You mentioned that the carport is a package port that you got from Home Depot?
Yes.
And have you done any modifications to it, you just installed it as per the kit?
No, I installed it and put walls on the side.
Yeah, I would suggest when you go down to ISD, if you have any paperwork on that model, to bring it with you, to show them what you put up.
I mentioned it to ISD.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Sorry. So, how many, eleven and a half to withdraw, or seconded?
Is that, is it, yes?
Second to withdraw?
Yes, Mr. Lopez Hernandez?
Yes.
To withdraw? Mr. Makua?
Yes, to withdraw.
Mr. Wooten, to withdraw?
Yes, to withdraw.
Mrs. Crowitz, to withdraw?
Yes, to withdraw.
And Mr. Kalman?
Yes, to withdraw.
No, stop. Has been withdrawn.
Problem, I got to draw, I have to move it.
Well, you don't have to move it right now, you just have to work with ISD until you come back to us again with a better plan.
With a better plan, with a...
Whatever you guys decide.
Follow the step back.
He's going to show his pictures and things.
Could you come forward and give any information, you have a presentation to make.
He should read the case, doesn't he? Did he read the case?
But we've heard...
Yeah, you gotta read the case.
This is Warren, right?
Continue.
Wall Street.
Case number 9988, 93 Warren Street, parcel number 053763023. Petitioner Antulo E. Lopez. Attorney Samuel A. Battali, ZBA number 99888. To vary the provisions of the City of Lynn Zone ordinance to allow the construction of a six-unit apartment house, 12-bedroom, on a nine-house, 47-square-foot lot in the R4 Apartment House District, with frontage of 93.76 feet, to replace the three-story dwelling destroyed by fire. The proposed dwelling lacks the required right-side line and rear setback lines, the required square footage as required by the City of Lynn Zone Ordinance. The prior structure consists of a two-family, four-bedroom dwelling.
Six?
Yep.
Six to four.
All right, thank you. If you proceed.
Okay. David Halleos, the的设计 designer, architect, we were here, we continued, we presented six units. We came back on a suggestion from Sam and the board for four units. And what we have submitted last week was a revised floor plan and revised site plan that depict four units as proposed, and parking was changed into amendments made on the drawing for a snow storage area to the side. Because two, there was two spaces there, those were removed, because the floor, we only need six, but you get two more for visitors, so there's eight, and it opens up room for snow storage. There's a space for a dumpster with a dumpster pad, which could be enclosed with a fence, for proposal. And I think those are basically all the amendments on the site that were made. The board wants to look through with me on the floor plans, that's... I'm here to do that with you.
And have any questions with the others?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just want, just noted that, you know, this is a much better plan, especially for that neighborhood. I think it's worth to have the seal of approval, I think, on this one. Just have one question with your, the designer here. I know you have, is this going to be, so you said the driveway here will be paved from the street all the way up, all the way to the dumpster?
Yeah, that's actually a separate driveway, so a truck can back up and pick up that dumpster.
So this curb already exists?
The other one...
This, this is current, but what about this curb?
Yeah, if it's not there, we could, we could put foot with the water and sew it, if that's...
What?
How do we use that?
There is no curb.
There's no curb here, right, so this does not exist currently. So it'll be something that you'll probably have to review with the city as well.
Absolutely.
Right.
That's right, I'm sorry. That exists in the driveway.
Yes, that's wrong, when, you know, when I don't know, one other time.
I'm sorry, but that's existed, the driveway.
The second driveway?
The second driveway, you have two driveways before.
Oh, it is, it's really, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't correct it, so I guess we... I'm sorry, this is a problem.
He didn't identify himself. Your name, your address, and your occupation.
I'm Antulo office, and I do construction. And I'm the owner of the property of 93 months.
All right, so we go for the record.
Thank you very much.
So is it like a double lot originally, definitely, you have two curbs?
No, it's just a, it's just a big lot. You know, it was a two-family house right there, with a really big lot. So that's why we, you know, we came with the idea of maybe bigger, you know. We had the idea of six units, you know, just thinking about it, but then, you know, for...
You understand.
Yeah, so, but it had two driveways before that house, so.
Okay.
One on each side of the house.
Give anything, go ahead, thank you.
Well, Derek is the most important member of this guy.
Hope first and foremost, don't taint the experience of the new members. Let me just get your slides on the table. You guys meet in person, I'm attorney general by the way. You're meeting in person.
It still is, probably. Are you ready for your presentation?
I'm always ready, Mr. Kalman.
I know you are, yeah. All right, give your name, address, your occupation.
Okay, I'm attorney general by the way, I live in Lynn, downtown Paris. My office is at 62 Anderson Street in Lynn, and I represent the petitioner, this is a continuing case. I see a lot of new faces. And I commend this board, because you're meeting in person. Do you realize there's only one board in the City of Lynn that doesn't meet in person, is still doing Zoom meetings, since the conservation... That's okay, but they schedule their meetings at 6:30, and you schedule yours at 7:00. And the people who've been here before you have said that it is often a gavel about who gets this room, what rooms in City Hall, but that's not to me to do, I have to throw up a timer, I apologize.
No, I...
I wasn't here on time.
Thank you.
Because I know you're all volunteers, and I said to Mary that I wouldn't be late, and I understand that I have another case, and so I said, put me at the end, graciously you did. Dave Halleos is the architect, I don't know who it was, proposal.
I think we all said same.
Hey, Armored. And so, I don't know what Dave said, I can repeat, forgive me, but essentially this. In December of 2028, there was a fight. It destroyed this man's home in his possessions. And he had a big lot, and he owns all the property in Ward 6, and he wanted to rebuild. And for the new members, the ordinance provides that if you have lost a property to a fire, that you can rebuild what was there, because you're going to do it within a year. So prior to that year being up, we filed, but we didn't come back to rebuild what was there, we decided to build something new and better, we believe it, okay? And those of you who are new, instead of put you on this end of the table apparently, but there were other members here who questioned that proposal. And their questions about that proposal, and I don't want to speak for them, these folks count, is they thought there were too many bedrooms. And I want you to understand, this is a learning process, okay? Nobody knows more than Mr. Kalman's been here over the past 50 years. But I point out from time to time, and I hope I'm right, that you can't find the word bedroom in the Lynn Zone Ordinance, it's not it, all right? I didn't draft the Lynn Zone Ordinance that says parking is in relation to the number of units, that's what it says, so we play by those rules. So we had that prior proposal, which if you read it, said we wanted six units, we had 10 parking spaces. We didn't have a rear yard because we abut the corner of the school, the rear, and there is no requirement for a rear yard, we abut a public land, so we're closer than 15 feet, but that's okay. We had a plan, because the next building on the corner, there's a right-of-way between the property line and the building to the right, which is its rear yard. And so we had a choice, and there are people who want to see green space, and there are people clearly who want parking, and so we presented a plan that had less than the required right side, because we compensated by the width on the left side, and by having sufficient amount. But we could, we also had a plan that did require it, and we could still need those kinds of requirements. But there were members then, and there may be some now, who felt there was too much. Counselor Holden, who represents the area, sent a strong letter in support, essentially because he knew Natalia and Yosem being active in the wood. We listened to the members who were there, and then they said, listen, if you can come back with a plan and reduce the number of units, and then we talked about, understand that to some extent, any number is optional, six, four, five, it's really, and these people have heard me say this before, and you'll hear it again. A great judge once said... A great judge once said, you can't drive a fire truck over a plane. And what he meant was this, it's gotta work. And the members who rightly say, you know, when I look at a plane, a sight plane, which is what's all, it's really awkward to try it, it's one dimension. In other words, it shows me a square within a rectangle, and I can't get a sense of mass. So Dave did a great job, I think, with the rendering of his plans, it showed what we call elevations, and it shows the exterior. And these folks that have been on the board for a long period of time, they're very familiar with the kinds of exteriors, the gable roots, straight roots, flat roots. And we also submitted a floor plan. They ought, gave us the opportunity to come back and actually bring the same thing up. We came back with a different plan. And that plan, as I guess Dave was presenting, which is reduce the number of units to four, which means that we still have more than the required parking, but we address some of the other concerns like snow storage. So the drive on the left is sufficient to have snow storage, trash removal, and so we think that we responded to what was asked of us with a plan that satisfies the need that the City of Lynn and some others who are no longer here. I said it's very relevant that how does the City of Lynn get the 2,000 new housing units by subtraction? But what I meant is, I was proposing six, so you're six closer to the magic number, and you want me to go backwards and propose four, so you're further back from the magic.
But Sam, if I just say, has to make sense, all right? That's...
Right, right.
Depends on your neighborhood, it has to make sense.
So we, in this plan, I want you to know, we believe that we addressed those concerns.
I think, I think I mentioned this earlier, Mr. Chairman, if I could just say something here. I think we went through the whole presentation, we was actually ready to make a motion here to accept.
Okay.
So that's what we are right now.
But I'm here ready. I don't want to block.
Would you consider moving the trash a little forward, so you get more of a yard for the occupants?
Oh, sure. Sure.
Can I give you a stipulation?
Yeah.
Just, because I think, you know, when people want to gather, they don't park, gather the parking lot, they just gather a yard.
Make that as a stipulation.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, but I mean, what we did is, we had sufficient room to play with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, and then I want to say that, that our, we don't think that what we're giving you was on, came down on a stone tablet. We're willing, if the judge will leave you the legitimate concerns.
And we're willing to work with you, so.
Right, we work together.
All right. All right.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
We're ready to make a motion here.
Mr. Chairman, just one more question.
There's a question here, Mr. Chairman.
One question, when the residents are removing trash, how will they get to the dumpster?
How, the residents?
Looking at the sight plane.
There's a curb in the street.
Oh, I mean, how does the truck pick it up?
From, from inside the building, and they're carrying trash out, how do they carry it to the dumpster?
Oh.
It would be a walkway.
Where...
Natalia's gonna look at it.
Yeah, so I just need to see where that walkway is on the site plan?
The designer's right there. So that means this, you are, I mean, this rendering here is not accurate?
No.
It would be a walkway, you know, this is the parking lot, and you could...
You have to show it to us, we can't see from over there, so can you just hold it?
Mr. Vitale?
Yes. It would be a walkway, it would be a little...
You should have taken...
Yeah, they're, they're, they're showing a question here.
Thank you.
Let us amend the right.
Can you tell us?
Step on there, this will be sidewalk.
Okay.
So you won't have to step on the park.
Okay, and be scratching up all the cars.
All right, thank you.
Can you, can you present that to the chairman, please?
Anyone else here in favor?
Yes, there's something to be added, to be written. To add against this parking, parking space number one, a setback of five feet to make a concrete sideways to this driveway.
That a stipulation?
Yes, yes.
So that means you'll be removing actually the shrubs that's in front of the building, which will lead you to not having enough...
Actually, that's about seven feet, we'll have two feet.
Okay.
Right? So we can do the...
I thought you were squeezing the parking now, so they don't want to end the conversation, but okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, from number one to the building is seven.
Yeah.
So five of concrete and two of wood.
Okay. You may be seated.
I may be seated?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we have to proceed, you know.
Thanks.
Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else opposed, anyone opposed, or opposed? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Who opposed to this petition? Anyone opposed, or what is the wish of the board?
I'm making wish we grant, yeah, mostly, mostly a grant with the stipulation, but we'd like to add another stipulation.
With two stipulations.
Yeah, you're right, the two stipulation, but the additional one, that it won't be any basement apartment in the future, all right?
Right, that's good, man.
Okay, but I've noticed two means a regress in the basement, and elevation seems that is an area where it can become an apartment in the future, so.
No, we don't want that.
Right, so with the stipulation that it won't be any basement apartment in the future.
Big levels.
Okay?
All right.
Can we just go over the walkway one more time?
They will provide a walkway from the front entrance to the...
To the dumpster.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or at least to the driveway, so they can get to the dumpster.
Thank you.
Please follow along.
With the stipul, oh, who's second?
I second.
You did? Mr. Lopez Hernandez?
Yes.
With the stipulations, three of them?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes, with the stipulation.
Mr. Wooten with the stipulations?
Yes, with the stipulation.
Mrs. Crowitz with the stipulations?
Yeah.
And Mr. Callen with the stipulations?
Yes, with three stipulations.
Okay.
Walk. Case number, case number 9992, 23 Walton Street, parcel number 037768008. Petitioner, Mandela M. Cholena?
My brother.
Sorry about that, I totally butchered that, I'm so sorry.
Where are we?
Attorney, San Roa Vitale. To vary the provisions of the City of Lynn Zone ordinance to allow the construction of a replacement front porch with less than required front setback on a created thing not performing to damage dwelling in the R4 apartment house district.
Thank you. I'm Attorney Sam Vitale. My office is at 60 Industry. Whitney is Martha, who sadly has owned the property since 2011, and it's a two-family in a non-core district, so the uses are prohibited. The building is not performing because it doesn't meet the current dimensional requirements as the lots are. But I will show another one of my, I don't know, the statistics of the... I don't like farmers' houses, all right? But this is what I tell people when they come to see me. It's not what I like, it's what you want, and I drive to get you what you want, okay? And tell you how to do it. So these folks were heading it. They, they went and talked to Mr. Donovan, who's the chief zoning officer for the City of Lynn, and they said, we want to take down the porch we have, we want to do this. And he provided them with a one paragraph answer that is very succinct, I'll read with it, says, it says, "The dimensional variance is required from the zoning board of appeals to construct the deck within 10 feet of the property line. A 10-foot setback must maintain between the structure and the front property line." And then he tells them how to get an application to the board of appeals. What he's talking about is a footnote to the Table of Dimensional Regulations, which I also will read to you. So in this, in the zone ordinance, we're by use, because it's a periodic use, we're into dimensions, which is the Table of Dimensional Regulations, which is section eight. The section eight of the zone ordinance, there are many footnotes, but the one that pertains to what Mr. Donovan was telling Martha is this one. Front yard. In single residence, general residence, and apartment districts, and on any business districts except for CB data or industrials, only in the manus provided within 10. Between every building, in each line, are lines of the ways on which the building abuts. There shall be a front yard, the clear depth of which shall be at least 10 feet. Now, there are exceptions, if you're on a business lot, if you're on a lot, that your neighbor is only eight feet back, and you're in line, and you're eight feet back, then you can have eight feet back. So they don't have, they have their present porch is fine, but to build the porch that they want, they need a variance, and that's what the board of appeals exists for. It's to vary the application of a requirement when they find that it's just it, okay? And so, Valentin here, is Martha's brother, and he happens to be a pretty good contractor. And so, he drew up a set of plans, a little thing about building a porch. So I just want you to know that, these folks are like a lot of people who come to the board of appeals. The good fortune is that Valentin and I know each other, and he said, we help my sister, and I said, yeah, sure. But really, this is about, and if you look at the pictures of the home, if you've been out there, you see it's a well-maintained property. And, and they, and for whatever reasons that people have, they want more front porch space, they cannot do it because Mr. Donovan rightly says, the only way you can do it is to vary the application of that footnote to this proposed change in the front porch. That's what this case is about. I defer to Mr. Callen when I come to the building, and these people, I got my guy here, Valentin, and those are a lot more about building porch than I do, but I would suggest to you that, to me, what was impressive is I looked at the pictures, and I looked at the home, and how well it was maintained, the commitment these people have, they've been there since 2011, and as I said, isn't whether I like farmers' porches, I'm not livid. They are, this is something they desire, to make their home more livable, and to do it, they need yard.
Thank you.
Would you think about moving your stairs on this side?
Yeah.
The door is here, so then if you have chairs, you don't have to zigzag to your...
All right, my chair, you got the...
I think it's not the...
No, I'm gonna be working here, we just...
Well, the stairs side street.
Oh, is the, is the front door here?
Yeah, like this.
Will you answer for a relocation?
Oh, okay, it's over there.
A relocation.
Okay, so, okay. Oh, no, it'd be, he's locating the stairs.
No problem.
No problem, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Vitale, you through it, you have your...
Yeah, that, so I've explained to them, again, so this is, can you end the footnote again, plus I may write all of most of the footnotes.
I think I overheard him, and I'm just copying it, I think I overheard you saying you want an enclosed, all right?
Well, once you have a projecting e.
Well, when you say enclosed, that, that would trigger other things. That becomes a livable space.
Right, right.
So that's, that's not what a petition, that's not what we see, that's not what we're here for.
Is it, I misunderstood as well, because I think you have, you have an issue with language.
Understand.
So, I understood, and have understood, that I could put a roof over the porch.
Sure, you can.
That is different than...
An enclosed.
Right. And so, what I was gonna point out to them is, and I know you guys know, that if you have a projecting e, you have a covered porch, it doesn't count in a sense, because that's in footnote, it's also...
I think it's the one, yeah, right, I think right before that footnote, right. So, right, I think we should whisper to you, but you can't have an enclosed porch, because then it'll be...
You're saying you can't put walls all around, is that right?
No.
Just a roof.
Yeah, just a roof, right.
Yeah.
Just a roof, but now, right, and that's not the petition we're seeing here today, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay?
Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else here in favor of this petition? CNN opposed, or here opposed, or opposed? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? CNN opposed, or here opposed, or opposed? What is the wish of the board?
Yes, to grant it, man.
Yes, to grant.
Yes, to grant with the stipulation that it never get enclosed.
Yes. Okay, you second it?
I second them.
You second?
I second them.
Mr. Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to grant with stipulations.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes, to grant with the stipulation.
Mr. Wooten?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
Ms. Crowitz?
Yes.
And Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant with stipulations. Mr. Wolf?
That's all set.
Thank you very much.
No, no problem.
Good luck.
Good luck.
We have one piece of work to do, I go with this one. The adjustment of the...
Are you guys a hit for?
I'll just...
No.
The A1 tap of the case.
Yeah.
A1 tap.
Tap, streets.
We continue that.
We continue that.
We continue that case.
That was continued.
That means next meeting, March, March 1st.
March 1st.
Yeah, that's when we'll hear your case.
Did you have something you wanted to leave with us? I'm sorry? Did you have some, a statement or a letter that you wanted to...
There's a letter, no, it's gonna be...
You believe in our secretary?
No, she received it.
She, we already received it, you mailed it to us, right?
No, no, that's for her to come in.
That's for her to come here.
I don't know what, we had a miscommunication happen, but, but we voted earlier to continue your case from March, March 1st.
Yes.
Sorry about that, seven, seven o'clock.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, we'll be at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Anything, come back.
Attorney Lamanna?
Attorney, Mr. Chairman, the Roberts rules are very clear, that in the fact that the chairperson steps down, or is no longer there, the vice chairman comes, and assumes the remainder of the term as a chairperson. But the Roberts rules is not a corresponding provision that necessarily makes the clerk or the vice chair, and so, we'd recommend that, for Roberts rules, you are the duly, duly elected chairperson in the absence of the five chairperson, but there should be a vote to confirm a vice chairman for the remainder of the year and a clerk.
We're gonna do that right now.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. All right, could you read this, Lee?
Yes. It's the only the members that can vote on it.
Yeah.
So we need a nomination of the vice chair, and we need a nomination of...
It's already, yeah, I think there was nomination already.
Right. Vice chairman would be Mrs. Crowitz.
Yeah.
And clerk would be Mr. Wooten. And, now you're gonna call the vote.
Yeah.
Mr. Lopez Hernandez?
Yes.
Yes for the nominations?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes for the nomination.
Mr. Wooten?
Yes for the nomination.
Mrs. Crowitz?
Yeah.
And Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
A motion of adjournance of honor?
I know we adjourned, we made the second.
All of you say aye?
Aye.
So vote, as well as your hands, and right, I thank you for coming.